Ladies and gentlemen, I want to welcome you to the April ...
Hi.
Nice to hear you.
All right. Ladies and gentlemen, is that better?
Yep.
I want to welcome you all to the April zoning Board of Appeals meeting. I was asked to announce first that there are three fire exits. One, two, and one over here. We will now start our meeting as we usually do with a pledge to allegiance. I will also tell you...
The mic's not on.
No?
Yes.
Thank you. I will also tell you who are standing that there were some extra chairs there. Sorry. We didn't expect quite so big a crowd. I am JD Goldberg. I have the honor of being chairperson of the zoning board of appeals for the town of This is a regular monthly meeting of the zoning board. As such, we have one new appeal to hear and possibly one or several old appeals. At this point, I would like to designate our zoning board alternate, Tim Scott, to join the board in the absence of regular board member Henry Roy for this entire meeting. Tim, do you accept?
Yes.
Thank you. Present on this board for this public hearing and for the entire meeting are Samantha Dietrich, who's vice chairperson, Patty Kelly, Jill Neon, Tim Scott, and myself, I'm JD Goldberg. The quorum requirement for the zoning board of appeals is three of five members, and I declare that that requirement is satisfied for this entire meeting. At the conclusion of the more routine ZBA business, I will open the public hearing. At this point, I will ask our court stenographer, who's down here, to begin describing the proceedings. I have also been told FYI that the entire meeting will be taped for showing on Sogardis' Public Television Channel 23. Before I begin regular business, I have a couple of requests. I would like to ask that everyone present show respect and courtesy to the board, the applicants, and anyone and everyone else present. I request that all cellphones be silenced and that there be no conversations among those present throughout the entire meeting. If cellphones or conversations are necessary, please go out into the hall through that exit. I would also request that all remarks or questions by all involved parties be addressed to the zoning board and not to each other. This will allow the board members and the court stenographer to hear more clearly. Thank you, and we will now hear our new appeal. Our new appeal is for Jefrizaan, 847 Dungan Road, Sogardis, SPL number 8.3-7.2. The property is zoned low-density residential with sensitive area overlay. The applicant wishes to subdivide a 55-acre lot in parcels and have applied for an area variance. Mr. Todd, if you'd like to come up here and speak to the board, we can share the microphones.
Okay. Listen to that.
We have problems in plans.
We have a small problem.
Okay.
We have some size problems. May I suggest that we put it down at that end of the table? I'm sorry if you can't hear everything. This is an unusual appeal. It does not require the decision of the building inspector. It falls under New York State Town Law Section 2776, which says that no decisions may be made by the planning board if there are any parts of it that do not comply with the zoning And this falls under 267-B of New York State law, town law. In this case, the applicants went to the planning board on February 19th requesting a three-lot major subdivision. Is that correct?
That's correct.
They were told that the land is zoned low-density residential, but it has a sensitive area overlay, which requires each parcel to be at least four acres. And they were told to come to us and get a variance before the planning board can take further action. So, perhaps you have an extra copy of the large one? Okay, so you know that the requirement is four acres per lot?
Correct. But these were pretty existing non-conforming houses that were there. Far back, houses that had been there, I mean, far back as 1892, in the case of the middle house, I think the 1930s, the front house. So, nothing new is going to be constructed. They were trying to put them on two acres each and give them access to the road and make sure that they covered their own septic field without covering our septic field for a house that was built much more recently that's uphill from them on the third lot. But if we were to extend the property further, it would also cover probably some of the area where our septic field would be. We want to retain access to the platycal creek, so we couldn't add acreage in that direction. And we would like to get out of the landlord business and be able to sell off these two houses that came with the property when we purchased it.
Is this your house?
The frame house is our house, yeah.
And where's your septic?
The septic is downhill, straight towards Blue Mountain Road.
Down this way?
Yeah.
It's right about here. You can right-hander.
We're going to keep this? We keep this?
Keep that, yes.
Right. It's over here. Where's the well?
The well is in between the septic and the house.
This is a well for this property?
Right.
Can you load all this?
Yes. That's all inaccessible because we can't build a bridge to go across, and that's all seasonal land on that side.
From the other side of the platycal?
The other side of the platycal, as far as we've explored. I mean, maybe some of the land that's far off, but I think it has to be contiguous if we were to give land to these other two lots.
Correct.
Yeah. Otherwise, that would be fine by me. I just have two more acres back there on the other side.
Okay. Do you want to understand that the zoning law requires four acres? And that doesn't seem to be taken into account on the map that we have.
We're showing these. We can do two-acre zones.
Exactly. It was designed for three acres.
Yes. Because we didn't know until we went to the planning board that it was going to have a special overlay zone.
Yeah.
Job service.
Yeah. Does the board have any questions?
Well, I mean, this is going to be difficult. You're asking for 100 percent extension for two additional acres, and that's a lot. Have you considered maybe just making it one parcel instead of two?
I mean, considered it, I think it would be more difficult for us to sell. We have to sell a piece that's got two houses on it rather than one. But, yeah, if that's the only alternative, then that's what we can do, of course. However...
Together, these will have more...
Patty?
You're saying that if we erase one of the lot lines and combine them to one property, the two houses?
That would be four acres?
That would be four acres. That's permissible.
Is it? To have two houses on four acres? What I'd like to know...
Is it permissible to have two houses on four acres?
No. It would be creating a nonconformity again.
Would be creating more of a nonconformity. Thank you.
If they were to put some of this land along the creek and on the other side of the creek into permanent conservation easement, could that... If they put six to eight acres in conservation easement on the creek where they say they can't build, and it was next to their house and the other house, could that account for the four acres if they could never build on it?
But not including it as part of their lot?
Not including it in the lots that they were going to sell, but making sure that nobody could build on what would be the other acreage.
It would be mitigating some of the impact of the variance, yes.
Which is what sensitive overlay is about?
We actually have, with the Woodston Land Conservancy people, and they would be interested in having part of the land as a land conservancy.
All right. And even you, you would be allowed to keep it as part of your land as long as you put it into permanent easement so that you could build on it?
I would just note that zoning law requires that the ZBA grant the minimal area variance. And at the same time, so that it can do what you want and at the same time preserves the character and wellness of the neighborhood. So, I guess what we're asking is that you, perhaps have your map read along to make the best attempt possible to meet the requirements of four acres. Because as Patty said, 100 percent variance is very large variance.
What if you do the conservation easement instead?
Just to explain that a little bit more, where is the conservation easement?
I would put it... So, this is the sensitive variance by the creek, and that's part of it. You don't want to give it to the other houses and give up, correct? That comes...
Just up here, up. Now, here was part of this two parts.
If you put a big part of this all the way up to here in conservation easement so that nothing can be built on it, I believe that that would mitigate the two acres that you need for nobody could build on it to protect the creek, which is basically what it's about. And I also believe that you have waterfront overlay on top of sensitive overlay, which is an acreage thing, but it does have building.
Restriction.
Restriction, yes. And is that all right with the board if they were to go with that? Does anybody have anything to say about that?
I think it's a good thing to try. I would suggest that you speak with our building inspector about this, and perhaps the people who drew their map and everything. And perhaps the people who drew your map also.
Sure.
Okay? All?
Do you want to...
Do you have any more questions for us?
I guess once we have this drawn, does that mean we make an appointment for another meeting review, or do we modify it?
We would hope that you might have it done by our next meeting, which is May 6th.
Sure.
All actions that come before the zoning board of appeals are required with a public hearing. Perhaps not this many people, but...
Maybe. Thank you all for coming.
So, if the board has other questions, they would ask for a motion to set the public hearing with the Zon appeal?
Are we going to set the public hearing before they come back with the new map?
They can come back with the new maps at the public hearing.
Okay.
So moved.
Second?
Moved by Patty?
Second.
Second by Chip? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I vote aye. It is unanimous.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You can't get applause.
This is some instructions for you.
Okay.
By the interest of the meeting law, the meeting will trouble not in this office. I would like to make this... And ask for a motion, CEPR, classification. And let me explain what CEPR is. And remember this, please, because you will be hearing it again tonight. The CEPR is the State Environmental...
Can you turn your CEPR?
Still can't hear?
No. Is this volume short?
Maybe one second.
Testing, testing.
You've got to speak right into the face of it.
I will speak right into the face of it and tell you why. No prongs necessary, thank you. The CEPR is the State Environmental Quality Review Act, also known as Part 617. And this is required from all agencies to make a determination to approve any action that may have a significant impact on the environment. To this end, everything that the zoning board does must have a separate classification and possibly determination after that. At this point, I will ask for a CEPR classification.
I make a motion.
Will you speak into the mic?
I make a motion that we set CEPR for the Zon appeal, 617.5. That's a type two, parentheses C17, granting of area variances for a single-family, two-family, or three-family residence.
I will second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And I say aye. It is unanimous. The CEPR is classified. On the agenda, you may see under old business that we have three other appeals. And I'm going to ask if anyone is present to present this. The first one is Lazaroff. Is anyone here to represent Mr. Lazaroff? Going once. Okay, I'm going to assume no one is here to represent Mr. Lazaroff. The next one is Mr. Denier and Mr. Richards. Is anyone here to represent them? Again, one, two, three. We will assume no one is there to represent them. The third one is Mr. Blundell and Mr. Ferrano. Is anyone here present to represent them? Okay. We will move on then. We are now ready to open our public hearing. I will again emphasize, please, that all comments and questions be addressed to the board members. This is not a debate. It is a hearing in which the zoning board may gather information from all parties. In order to do this, I ask again that everyone continue to show respect and courtesy to the board, the applicants, and everyone else. We will begin by calling the attorneys present to represent the two sides of this appeal. I'm going to ask, take a deep breath, attorneys, that you take no more than six minutes to Mr. Higgins, do you wish to go first?
I can prefer Mr. Greco.
Mr. Greco, the attorney for the town?
Thank you, John Greco. Members of the...
Good evening, members of the zoning board of appeals.
And ladies and gentlemen, thanks to you everyone for coming here this evening. I'm John Greco, I'm the attorney for the town of Sogardis. And this obviously is an application by Joseph Karolos and Mrs. Karolos for an appeal from an interpretation of the zoning code that Mr. Weeks has made in issuing several stop work orders involving the Karolos properties on Route 212, Goat Hill Road, and Thel Quade Road. Position of the town of Sogardis is very clear and very simple, and that is that the operation of Mr. Karolos at the Route 212 site is in violation of the town of Sogardis zoning law, and it's also in violation of the town of Sogardis dumping law under our municipal code. I believe that the issue before the board, zoning board, may be limited to the zoning issue because the zoning board is charged with deciding appeals under the zoning code, but the town will touch upon the other sections of our municipal code that we believe Mr. Karolos' operation violates. Now, getting into the specifics of the zoning law. The Karolos property, you can see the zoning district map on the board. It's located on Route 212 in the highway business district zone. Mr. Karolos' property was formerly owned by Ray and Selena Roth. And when Mr. and Mrs. Roth owned the property, they did apply to the town of Sogardis Code Enforcement Office, Building Department, to obtain a pre-existing business designation. They applied for that pre-existing business designation, cleaning, pre-existing business of trucking, excavating. The application was for trucking, excavating, sawmill, and lumber. The former building inspector, Mr. Robert Trincelito, acted upon that application, said the form had been received on February 28, 1990, and that there was a certification as a pre-existing business for trucking and excavating only. And I will repeat that the certification specifically states for trucking and excavating only, and that would have gone back on April 8, 1991. Thereafter, in June of 2013, Mr. Roth's widow, Selena Roth, sold the Route 212 property to Joseph and Rachel Karolos. Mr. Karolos then changed the nature of the business being operated on that property to a construction and demolition debris processing facility, a construction and demolition debris disposal facility. Now, there's nothing in the pre-existing business determination that would authorize the operation of construction and demolition debris disposal or construction and demolition debris processing under the pre-existing business determination that had been made and filed by Robert Trincelito. Our zoning law specifically prohibits in a highway business district refuse systems operations, and if the board looks at the classification of refuse systems under the standard industrial classification manual, you will see that it involves... I'll quote from it. Establishments primarily engage in collection and disposal of refuse by processing or destruction. Establishments primarily engage in collecting and transporting refuse, and it includes rubbish collection and disposal. The pre-existing business designations for trucking and excavating do not include disposal or processing of construction and demolition debris, or refuse, or waste products, or rubbish of any kind. And that's what Mr. Karolos is doing on the property. When Mr. Karolos first appeared at the first meeting of the zoning board of appeals, under questioning by member Patty Kelly, Mr. Karolos admitted that he was operating a construction and demolition debris processing facility on the Route 212 property, and that he had the equipment necessary in the processing in terms of crushing material and screening materials. And that submit of board members has nothing to do with trucking or excavating. It's an entirely different use, and that change in use takes him out of the... And that change in use takes him out of the pre-existing business designation and into the requirements of our zoning law. So, we have a lot more information we'd like to present to the board, but I've been warned that I only have a few seconds left. So that basically outlines our position under the zoning. The town also has an anti-dumping law that prohibits the dumping of construction and demolition debris, and prohibits the processing of construction and demolition debris. That's under our municipal code. The only exception to that is if a special permit is obtained from the town board. The Karolos have neither applied for nor obtained any special permit under the municipal code. And in addition, I mentioned there were other code violations. We have a stormwater pollution prevention plan requirement where the acreage disturbed is one acre or more, and there's been no approval of a stormwater pollution prevention plan, although there was an application submitted for one site, Goat Hill. Nothing on Thel Quay at all. That application is still pending. And ladies and gentlemen, we've done some calculations here, and our engineer will inform the board that based upon the annual reports that Mr. Karolos filed with the Department of Environmental Conservation, thus far, in three years, '16, '17, and '18, over 41,000 tons of construction and demolition debris have been brought into this facility. This construction and demolition debris is arising by Mr. Karolos' own reports out of the Bronx, and out of Long Island, and out of Queens. And I ask everyone in this room why any clean fill would be transported over 100 miles to be dumped, and the owner of the property paid to allow them to dump on the property. Karolos, there's something wrong here, and the fox is guarding the hen house, and that is that there's no oversight. Mr. Karolos says we refuse to allow the town onto the property for testing. We've come up with a specific testing protocol and requested that we be allowed to come on after telling this board on the record that the town can come anytime, just call us up, and we'll let you on there. Well, since then, when we tried to obtain access, we've been denied. And you can ask Mr. Karolos if he threw the DDC officers off of this property also when they asked to test him.
Thank you, Mr. Greco. I'm sorry, I overlooked two important things to tell you. That, first, all four of the Karolos' applications at the March 4th monthly meeting of the zoning board were unanimously voted to be classified as type 2 actions under SECR, as interpretation of an existing code, rule, or regulation. And also to remind you that a legal notice of this public hearing was duly published in the Sargades Times on March 50. This is the official publication of the town of Sargades. And I would like to add, but cannot, in addition, the CBA Secretary Kim Smith will receive certification, hopefully soon, that she has received proof of all required notices of this public hearing in residence within 500 feet of the property boundary. I understand that Mr. Higgins sent these out, and that he will certify that they were sent out in adequate time. Sorry, you don't even have to talk about it.
That's correct.
I'm sorry?
I think that's correct, ma'am.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Higgins, you're on. You've got seven minutes because we require only seven.
Well, obviously, we have differing points of view. Want me to go here?
Yes, please. I'm sure everyone in the room would like to hear you.
Oh, I'm sure. First of all, let me say, good evening. Thank you all for coming out. As you are aware, we are. As you are aware, this is the second meeting on this particular issue. The first one was last month. This public hearing is scheduled. We have a different point of view from the town, and I'll explain to you the genesis of that point of view. It is true that Mr. Karolos did not apply for any special use permit, C and D. And that's because on November 17, 2016, the town zoning officer, Mr. Weeks, wrote a letter to Selena A. Roth regarding Mr. Karolos' property. And without reading the entirety, although it is part of the record, Mr. Weeks said as follows. "On review of town records, the parcel property owned now by Mr. Karolos was going to pre-existing business status on April 8, 1991, for the operation of a trucking and excavating business to your deceased husband Raymond V. Roth. Therefore, in accordance with the town of Sargades zoning law, the rights of a pre-existing business to operate an excavating trucking company are automatically transferred to the new owner, Joey Karolos. Mr. Karolos has also provided NYSDEC documentation regarding the construction debris processing of material determined to be clean fill, such as concrete block, brick, asphalt, etc., granting him the ability to utilize the material in his excavation, trucking operation, for which he has the right to conduct per town zoning as a pre-existing business." And then he cited Section 9.5. "Transfer of rights, all rights established under this section shall be automatically transferred to all future owners of the property on which the business is placed." So Mr. Karolos, in fact, has documentation from the town telling him he can operate and process C and D. C and D that he is processing is by definition clean fill. It's not his definition, it's the definition of the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. At initial, there were some controversies here, and in the interests of trying to resolve things, we had a meeting with the town when a stop work order was issued for 1446 Route 212. I was served upon my client, but it's faxed to me. The only thing that was listed in there was operating a site, a collection site to process construction and demolition debris. There was no notice of violation. There was no statement as to why a determination had been made to reverse the determination of the building inspector. There was no appeal taken from the determination of the building inspector. Two and a half years later, the town unilaterally decided to shut Mr. Karolos down. Why did he do this? I'm not entirely sure, but I'm of the opinion that there is a belief that there is contaminated fill. That belief is substantiated by absolutely no proof at all. None, not one bit of proof. The DDC defines C and D, or concrete and material of light nature that is pulverized, as clean fill. Mr. Karolos is processing clean fill, and he's utilizing it as per his DDC permit and as per the determination of the town building inspector. Thereafter, without any notice at all, other issues were raised with regard to Thel Quay, the two properties there. There was a notice of violation for the Goat Hill Road. My client was supposed to provide SWPP, Stormwater Pollution Prevention Plan. By January 23, our man required one more day. He served it on. Haven't heard anything about it since. There was an objection at one point to the quality of the plan. And so we submitted the plan. That was in February, and they'd been pondering, February 10. The town had been pondering it ever since. But the plan appears to accord to the requirements of statute. So just exactly what is going on here? Under the guise of enforcing SWPP, town officials have entered in or upon the lands of my client without any process, judicial process, for the purposes of determining a violation of zoning ordinance, which may or may not be substantiated by facts. But that violation is a misdemeanor. And when you're searching for evidence for crimes, the misdemeanors are crimes. You have to have search. The town never had one. Their determinations relative to the size of the property fills on 33 and I think 43 Thel Quay is a guess. It is not waste, it is not refuse material. It is tilt, as defined by the New York State Department of Environmental, clean tilt, as defined by the New York State Department of Environmental Conservation. There has not been, to my knowledge, a request for an SWPP for 1446 Route 212. I note, by some of the slayers that went around, the concern that everybody has regarding pollution, and it's a radical, legitimate concern. What you may not be aware of is the town of Sargades closed its landfill, and it's leaching arsenic, among other things. It has been for a period of time. That is contiguous to the 13, 33 and 43 Thel Quay Road. In fact, we did offer the town to go in and inspect. They blew us off. We were out of hearing, and they said they would call the following morning. And I said, fuck. But for three weeks prior to that, we sat there, we said, come on in, take them, take samples, and we shut it down.
Who has determined what he's dumping is clean fill? I'm sorry to interrupt.
The New York State Department of Environmental Conservation.
No, they, you said they defined what it was.
Excuse me, excuse me. Please don't interrupt. Thank you.
Suffice it to say that we differ significantly with what the town believes to be the case. Suffice it to say that there is nothing to demonstrate that the two properties on Thel Quay Road exceed one acre, nor is there anything to indicate that they need an SWPP. The other two, I think I've covered with some degree of clarity. It appears now my time is up. Like a 30-second warning?
Yes.
We're here because the town has gone out of its way to shut this man down of any access to any of his properties in this community on the belief that there may be contaminated fill, without any proof whatsoever of any kind. There were allegations about exceeding the permissible amounts, but the fact is, nobody's measured it scientifically. Thank you, I'm getting knocked here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higgins. Mr. Higgins and Mr. Greco? I would like to ask the board if they have any questions for you, please. We are not taking questions from the large group of concerned citizens at this moment, please. And when we do, you will ask the board, and we will direct the questions.
Before we do that, Madam Chairman, I submitted to the board. Before we do that, Madam Chairman, I submitted to the board previously the pleadings in this matter. I ask that they be made part of the record in their retiring. I further submitted to the board some additional letters and other documents today. I ask that they be made part of the record and included in the determinations and deliberations of this hearing. Thank you.
And we said what, Mr. Higgins?
We said you wouldn't receive it.
Correct. And we said they would be part of the record.
Correct.
The other voluminous records are part of the record.
I wanted to be sure, and I am. I am assured by your statement. Thank you.
Look, on public record. Now, if the board has any questions, Patty?
Mr. Higgins, Mr. Higgins, I have a question.
Sure.
Just for clarification, your client received a letter dated July 29, 2016, from Lee Rep. of Region 3, the Division of Materials and Management, enclosing a validated copy of his registration that we've been talking about.
Yeah.
That letter is important for a couple of reasons. First, it reminded him of the general and specific requirements of the Solid Waste Part 360 law, and it also specified, this registration does not preclude your facility from adhering to all applicable federal, state, and local requirements. That letter also told him that the effective date of his registration was going to be, let me just get it exactly right here, November, November of 2016. When we got the tonnage records that you sent us, he started taking in and processing C and D in August of that year. And that continued right up to the end of the year, even though his permit was not valid until November.
I don't know what the rules are for an application pending.
It was validated in this letter.
What's going on? The microphone.
His, his, his registration was validated by that letter that he received, and it was sent to him on July 29.
Fine. So his registration was validated.
Was validated to.
The actual document did not get there.
To begin in November of that year.
Did they say so in the letter?
Speaking to the microphone, Mr. Higgins.
Did it say so in the letter?
It did. It did. And that he doesn't have a copy of it, I'm sure he does.
I don't know.
It was validated effective November 26, 2016. That's what the letter sent to him.
Fine.
But I want to be made aware, part of the record, that he was accepting and processing C and D months before his registration.
According, according to what, according to what Mr. Weeks said in his letter, that was fine. When he wrote to Mrs. Roth.
I'm telling you what the DDC said to your client.
Yes, I understand.
With, with the specifications that he applied by New York State and local laws, that was, that was the date that he was supposed to start working.
How early was?
Well, he was, or started earlier.
Any more questions?
All right, I believe we.
I have one more. As you can see, there's more than five people in this room. Is there going to be a cut-off time for tonight?
Yes, there will be.
When will that be?
When I decide.
Fine, I just thought you might have had it.
It will depend on how many people have signed up to speak, when they have finished speaking, for three minutes each, without repeating, please, and whether there's anyone else who wishes to speak after this.
Do we have the sign-up sheets?
Yes, I have the sign-up sheets.
How many people do we have on the sign-up sheets?
Twenty-seven.
Okay, lawyers from mathematicians to the math, 27, 12. We will decide when the time comes. Do you have a preference?
With respect to?
When we, when we. When we, when we...
Now, I just thought you might. That's why I asked.
Oh, I know.
Good.
All right, we will start calling in order of sign-up. If anyone wishes to sign up and has not already done so, then your sign-up sheet still lies in your little... So we're going to put something back so that anyone who wishes to sign up may. And I believe, I recognize the name of Emily Spencer, who is an attorney representing the Catskill Mountain Key group. We're going to, by courtesy, give her six minutes.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Can everyone hear me okay?
No.
How about this? Yeah, that is good. Okay. I think they did a good job. So be very quiet and you'll be able to hear. So my name is Emily Spencer. I'm the attorney representing Catskill Mountain Key group and also residents of the town of Sogardes who reside near the referenced properties. We have reviewed stop work orders and we're here to encourage the CBA to affirm each and every one. The town is properly enforcing its laws, which are in place to protect the community and environmental health. The activity at these sites is exactly what these laws are meant to prevent. Trucking in dozens of loads daily of New York City waste and then dumping it in the forests of Sogardes is simply not allowed. We call on the CBA to affirm the building inspector's determinations and uphold the stop work orders. This must be done right away. The property owners can come back to the CBA for a variance if they want to, but it urgently, these stop work orders urgently need to be affirmed. The letter that I've handed all of you lays out the violations of three sections of the town code, which Mr. Greco went over. And so what I like to do is just go through those, and I know others here will want to speak about their experiences, but I like to go through the legal violations and just add some details to that. Violation of any of these three sections of code would be enough to justify a stop work order, but together, there's just simply no question. So I'd like to start with the 1446 Route 212 site. As Mr. Greco noted, this is a construction and demolition debris waste processing facility. The owner has called it a waste processing facility and applied to DEC for registration. The neighbors have seen dozens of trucks per day dropping off loads of concrete, asphalt, and other demolition debris. And a waste processing facility is not allowed in the highway business district. It's only allowed in the industrial districts in Sogardes. Now, the property owner has argued that he has a right to operate as a pre-existing business. That's not true for two reasons. The first is what Mr. Greco brought up, which is that the pre-existing business registration that was issued to Mr. Roth was for trucking and excavating. It was not for waste processing. And I think Mike Ferraro will give some more details on what happened, but the previous business operated by Ray Roth, including trucking and excavating, snowmobile and motorcycle rentals, and a lumberyard and sawmill, waste processing was never part of that business. So even if the pre-existing business registration allows a trucking and excavating business to exist, it does not authorize a waste processing business. The second reason is that the pre-existing business registration, even for trucking and excavating, has expired altogether. The town code allows registered pre-existing businesses to continue indefinitely, but the trucking and excavating business, according to Mrs. Roth, the widow of Mr. Roth, ended in 1996. The code doesn't say that pre-existing businesses can stop and then start up again 20 years later. Wait 30 seconds, I thought I had six minutes.
Yeah, she did.
Okay. Thank you. Three-minute warning. So there's more detail in the letter, but there has been a long period of time that there was no trucking and excavating business, and even at least this year, there was no business at all on the property. And there are aerial photos attached to the letter that show that. As far as the November 2016 letter from the building inspector to Mrs. Roth, it's unfortunate if the town made a statement that is ambiguous or misleading, but that does not stop the town from enforcing its code. The town needs to be able to set things right. The New York State law is clear on that, and that's what the town is doing here. Secondly, for the Route 212 site, there's a clear violation of Chapter 204, which I won't reiterate because Mr. Greco already did, but no land may be used for a C and D processing facility without a permit from the Town Board. That's an annual permit. Anyone in town doing this activity needs to go each year and get that permit. And the rules specifically say that a permit cannot be issued for C and D that originates outside of Sogardes. Even if that pre-existing business exemption is in place, that would have nothing to do with Chapter 204, which is a completely different section of the code. So that violation alone justifies a stop work order. And in the interest of time, I won't go over the other violations that are in existence on the property, but there are a number of state violations of New York State Environmental Conservation and Department of Transportation law. Now, as for the Goat Hill Road and Felkway Road sites, the first thing I want to point out is that what is being dumped on that property is solid waste. In the application that was made to the Zoning Board of Appeals, there was a section of New York State regulations attached. That section must have been printed out about two years ago because those regulations were repealed in 2017. Those regulations are no longer in place. They have a definition of waste that exempts certain things from waste, but those definitions have been repealed and replaced with much more strict definitions that are in place now. And I've attached the current definitions in Exhibit B to my letter. The current regulations rely on materials being kept separate and used for specific purposes, which do not apply here. For example, asphalt is only exempt if it's recycled for use in pavement. So although DEC may delay in enforcing these new regulations, they are on the books and they're the law of the land. Okay, I will wrap that up. So, right. So the C and D processing facility, the disposal facilities are disposal facilities for waste. They are not allowed without a permit under Chapter 204. Further, the facilities are violating stormwater laws. Sogardes is an MS-4 community, which means that it has a responsibility for enforcing stormwater laws. Any disturbance greater than an acre requires a SWIP. That's how we keep the runoff of these sites from damaging other lands and waters and causing pollution. Everyone in the construction industry knows this. There was no SWIP in place for 90 Goat Hill Road. It's only being done after the fact. As far as 33 and 43 Felkway Road, that's all one site, and it doesn't matter if it's two parcels. If you're disturbing more than an acre, you need a SWIP. That's the law. And so, as I said, we're calling on the CBA to immediately affirm the stop work orders. This is egregious. It's a clear case. It needs to be done immediately so that the town can enforce. And as I said, if the property owner wants to come back for the proper permits and avariance, he can do that, but this needs to be done right away. And we also go over some other remedies that we hope the town will see. Thank you for your time. Thank you.
Okay. The next speaker who has signed up is Mike Ferraro.
Do you have such a spell their last name? It's interesting the other way.
Hello, everybody. Can you hear me?
Yes, excuse me. I have a request from our very patient person, Dr. Harper. Would you spell your last name for her, please? Thank you.
My name is Michael Ferraro. I live at 1457, which is Black Cross Street, the dump site that we're talking about. Just a little timeline. My wife and I, we moved here in 1992. I worked at the sawmill across the street. Can you hear me now? So I worked, I worked at the sawmill across the street since 1976. Ray Roth is my wife's uncle, and he had a snowmobile motorcycle shop on the property up until about 1985. He also ran the sawmill until around 1995, and he was also doing trucking and excavation until he became ill and was bedridden from 2010 until he died in 2012. When I say trucking and excavation, he did septic, roadways, and house sites, was not bringing in construction demolition debris from outside the zones. Most of his work was hauling from his Yale Bank on Black and Bush Road to cement plants in Catskill. When he became sick in 2010, there was no longer any business performed on the property. It was probably before that, but I know from 2010, there was nothing at all there. They rented the building to Stuart Specter, who is still there making guitars. In 2013, Selena sold Joe Corolla's parcel of land where he now calls a C and D processing facility. It was, it was a grown-up field that had some remnants of the old sawmill there, left behind slabs of old lumber piles and so on. Corolla started clearing the house for a house site. I remember hearing the sound of a hammering for when he was drilling the well there and digging the ledge out for more room, in which he raised the grade higher where the water would run, run out onto 212 and cause freezing on the roadways, which caused traffic problems during winter months. In the fall of 2016, I noticed trucks coming in dumping material, not paying much attention to it. By spring of 2017, more and more trucks coming in at 11, 12 o'clock at night, backup alarms beeping, tailgates banging, same in the early morning, four or five o'clock in the morning, fleets of Mack trucks with Dump Master written on the side of it. The truck outfit was busted in Suffolk County for dumping contaminated material. So, so I called DEC numerous times, I didn't get much response from them at the time. They were dumping, they always said, "As long as you're dumping during daylight hours." But I'm running out of time, so I'll just get through a little bit here.
They'll give you more time if you call.
So anyway, we'll get back to, you know, the trucks were coming in and, you know, like 7:00 AM in the morning, night, October 2018, it was when I really started counting trucks between 25 and 30 trailer loads a day. That's between, that's between 600 to 900 tons a day, not the average for all his claims on his annual report, which is about 75 tons a day. So I started taking a lot of pictures from my properties of the mud in the road, the amount of trucks parked on the roadway when Corolla came over and confronted me and asked me why I'm taking pictures. And I just told him he was disrespectful to the whole community. And I asked him about the contamination. He says, "Well, if anything's contaminated, you'll tell me it's a hot load." And that was the end of our conversation. And I walked away. He said, "I hope you're not going to start no trouble." Well, that's where I left it. But anyway, he asked, Mrs. Kelly asked him a question at his own Board of Appeals meeting, you know, "Can you defy how you process your material?" And he was kind of dumbfounded when you asked that question. And his answer to you was, "I run all my material through a crusher. We make big rocks, just like this, big rocks, and the smaller rocks, and we make material that we sell, which is hogwash. There's never been a crusher on the property, not once, as I have seen one." So is that, my time's up? Okay. And that's, I just hope it gets cleaned up, that's all. Thank you.
The next speaker is Greg Cornell. Please, please, don't try to, I know that you have things that we want to say, but we really need to move along, so I would really appreciate everyone keeping to the three minutes. Cornell?
Good evening, Zoning Board of Appeals. Thanks for having this meeting and allowing me the time to talk. My name is Greg Cornell. I live at 1389 Route 212, about a quarter mile east of the Corolla site on Route 212. My wife and I have a 65-acre farm where we raise organically grown vegetables and fruit, chickens, bees, and lots of other things as well. Since I was first made aware of Mr. Corolla's activities at the three sites, I've been studying his pattern of operation. From the time he began accepting C and D material to when he started dumping it on Goat Hill and Felkway Roads, to the ways in which he continues to operate to this day, the pattern goes like this. I'm going to ignore the laws in place, including the zoning laws, whether they be local or state, and you just try to stop me. So Mr. Corolla's decided in 2016 to get paid for receiving C and D material at his property on Route 212. Did he apply for, as Sogardes Town Law requires, a special permit to operate as a C and D processing facility? No, he did not. And maybe that's because the town has a law that prohibits the issuance of a special permit to a facility that receives waste originating outside the town. And I heard Mr. Corolla said at the meeting in March, fully admit that the material comes from Queens, the Bronx, Nassau, and Suffolk Counties. You can see a pattern emerge here, and the pattern applies to the sites on Goat Hill and Felkway Roads as well. Ignore town laws and zoning codes. Violate DEC and DOT regulations. When you're caught, claim that your constitutional rights are being violated, that you're being harassed, that your right to make a living is being impaired. Register as a waste transfer facility with DEC, but then call yourself a trucking and excavating company. Then tell the newspaper reporter that you're a concrete aggregate processing plant. Keep the target moving. Do anything you can to avoid adherence to the laws and accountability because the laws don't apply to you. But this isn't going to continue because there are enough people in this town, my neighbors and friends, who aren't going to allow it to. My neighbors and I are not anti-business. We run businesses, as do many of the people in here tonight. Or they manage businesses, or they work for them. What we're against is unregulated business. We observe the laws of the community in which we live because we understand that the community's existence depends on each member's acceptance of and adherence to those laws. When a member places himself above or beyond those laws, he must be restrained and penalties apply. I exhort you, members of the Zoning Board of Appeals, to affirm the actions of the town in shutting down these sites. And then we need to find out what's in these sites, and then get Mr. Corolla's to remove them. Thank you very much.
Gray Morris is the next to speak. Would you spell your last name, please?
M-O-R-R-I-S. My name's Gray Morris. My wife and I have been homeowners and taxpayers in Sogardes for 16 years. Our house is located less than one-quarter mile downhill from the 33 and 43 Felkway Road properties owned by Mr. Corolla's. What's puzzling and disturbing to us is that he would buy property, it's owned at 314, which is defined as rural vacant lots located in residential area, in a heavily settled neighborhood, in close proximity to the Woodstock A-School, Green Air Farm and Education Center, and the Catskill Center's Storm Preserve, and began shipping in and dumping untested construction and demolition debris of questionable origin there. This dumping activity is not only inconscionable, but illegal. The owner does not have Department of Environmental Conservation landfill permit. In order to allow C and D dumping, not only would he need a parcel zone for this use, would also need a stormwater pollution prevention plan, a SWIP, in place before the dumping began. This is required by both state and federal regulations governing runoff from sites of land disturbance of more than one acre in an area to ensure that the stormwater discharge off the location... What's puzzling and disturbing to us is that he would buy property, his own, to 314, which is defined as rural vacant lots located in residential area in a heavily settled neighborhood in close proximity to the Woodstock Day School, Green Air Farm and Education Center, and the Catskill Center Storm Reserve, and begin shipping in and dumping untested construction and demolition debris of questionable origin there. This dumping activity is not only inconscionable, but illegal. The owner does not have Department of Environmental Conservation landfill permit. In order to allow C and D dumping, not only would he need a parcel zone for this use, would also need a stormwater pollution prevention plan, a SWIP, in place before the dumping began. This is required by both state and federal regulations governing runoff sites of land disturbance of more than one acre an area to ensure that the stormwater discharge off the location is as clean and non-polluted as possible. Mr. Corolla's has no such permit or plan in place for this 4.4-acre parcel at Felkley Road or any of the other properties addressed by the stop work order. Yet each day, several truckloads of questionable construction debris barrel down John Joy Road and are dumped onto the land just up the hill from our house. In addition, a pile of construction demolition debris at 90 Goat Hill Road exceeds 15 feet in height. A conservative estimate puts the volume there in excess of 2.7 million cubic feet. Bottom line, as mentioned before, C and D disposal requires annually a renewed permit, and debris from outside Sogardies is not permitted. So the town could not legally issue a permit for any of these properties in any case. This reckless treatment of our environment could potentially contaminate our water, threaten our property values, and consequently, the tax base, and, most importantly, endanger our children's health for decades to come. We respectfully urge the board to do the right thing and uphold the stop work order, and order Mr. Corolla's to immediately remedy this dangerous and illegal situation at his own expense. Thank you.
The next speaker is Nicole Roskos. I'm sorry if I pronounced the names incorrectly. Would you please spell your last name for Teresa?
I'm Nicole Roskos. I live on Stoll Road, near the Goat Hill Road facility. Most of us, you don't need a degree in environmental studies, though I did study environmental studies, and I'm a gardener, and I'm a big fan of the forest around here. But you don't need a degree in environmental studies to know that we all share the same air and the same water. This has raised lots of questions for me. Living here, we are love this beautiful place. It gives us a sense of safety, how lush it is, and the amount of oxygen from all the trees. And we feel like a lot of us have clean water and fresh air when we go outside. Since I've known about this, I'm starting to question that. Now we're facing this construction and demolition waste, which, from what I've heard, can include lead, asbestos, and PCBs, among many other toxic chemicals. And a lot of people are concerned about the runoff into the wells, and also air. The wind can blow the dust from these piles, and we don't know where it goes. And you all heard that windstorm last night. So I do have these questions, and I'm sure we all do. How far does the wind blow the dust? How far is the water aquifer connected? And how long does it take for it to get down there? I have a three-year-old son, and we already had an issue with him having high lead levels, which I've worked very hard to get lowered. But now I have to question that again. And it's not just the water. It's you can get it through the dust and the air, the lead. So I'm just wondering if the families that live adjacent to these properties have tested their children for lead, because I think that would be a good way to know what's going on. And I just have a couple other questions I want to end with. How many years will this community be affected by this? Who's going to do the cleanup? I'm concerned that we'll have to do the cleanup, and nobody is above the law. And that's what's great about this board and the local town government, is that it's here to protect us, and that's what this is all about. So thank you so much for doing this, and hopefully you'll uphold this stop work order. Thank you.
Hello. Have you got the spelling? Thank you for having us. To say that I am outraged is an understatement. I am appalled. Appalled that any human being could foul the environment to the extent that Corolla's has is completely beyond my comprehension. The only other time I have witnessed such mass destruction of the natural environment was in West Virginia, when the coal companies were attempting to remediate where they'd been mining. And in South Africa, where I was visiting, when DePiers was attempting to do the same. Nothing grows in this environment, as all natural fungi and bacteria responsible to help regrowth has been wiped out. Places where environmental law is not in place, only pure greed is at the heart of this endeavor. My family bought an organic farm on Route 212 in 2017 so that we could raise organic food for ourselves and our community. We chose Sogardies because of the natural, beautiful, open spaces, and because of the strict code of law which was established by the town and its taxpayers, which all of us in this room are, taxpayers and voters. We all depend on the water we drink and farm, with which comes from wells we dig on our properties, wells that are filled by an abundance of streams and aquifers in the area. This was a selling point for me, having come from California, where water is precious. And believe me, I had our water tested before we moved in, each way from Sunday. I live... After a year... I live about a quarter mile south of the 212, on 1389 Route 212. After living there for one year, all three of my dogs suddenly developed pancreatitis. Two passed away. I came down with a liver problem, lost 34 pounds, was in bed for two months, never figured out what it was. My eyes turned yellow, my skin turned yellow. I assumed it was something in my house poisoning me. I live downstream, quarter mile from the Corolla site. The Wilderkill runs directly across from this site and enters my property after passing through the rots to fill my wells and pond, which I use to irrigate my organic farm. We have a right to know what is in the debris he's dumping and to test all of it, so that we can feel safe in our homes. Water and air belongs to the community. Mr. Corolla's operation is an absolute outrage. I ask everyone who is here and feels the way I do to please stand up. We implore you to do the right thing. Stop this operation. You won't have the maximum help. Where are you asking them to do? Of all the people that people are bringing to Corolla's, to dump here and home at 100 miles per day? Several of the trucking companies spotted delivering early on were named in an operation called Pay Dirt, which closed down in Suffolk Clough County a year ago. It's auspicious that this debris started arriving when that happened. Thank you.
And I have to follow them performance. Bear with me. I live on John Joy Road. I'll talk fast. My property adjoins all of the Felkley Road properties. So we are the only people that can see that dump because it's way in the back. So just let me tell you a little bit about it. There is seven acres of dump. And it goes up a ridge behind my house, so it's above me. And by the way, it's also filled in a wetland, which is illegal. We built our house 30 years ago. Like everyone else, we love the area. Beautiful, quiet country road. And this all started two years ago. Now, today, we have trucks. Every day, all day, seven days a week, every 15 minutes. They come up, they come down. They're up there, bang, goes the tailgate. All day long. And a judge had ruled that, yes, he lifted the stop work order, but he's supposed to stop at 3:00. Never happened. He's now dumping after dark. We had one day, it was over 13 hours, every 15 minutes. So he's been telling us that, "Oh, well, yeah, I'm putting in fill to get ready for a house, to put in houses." So there's been over two years of fill, thousands and thousands of cubic yards of fill, thousands of trucks since that time. But I have yet to see a building from that. So I can tell you, we built our house 30 years ago. My husband physically built our house from the time we cut the first tree, cleared the site, until we moved in with less than one year. Now we have two years. The fill's still coming, the fill's still coming. Where are they at? So we've gone from a peaceful country setting to feeling like we're living in a truck stop on the roadway. These trucks sound like 18-wheelers that are coming up our driveway. This is what the windows closed in the winter. I dread the summer. Can't open my windows, can't put in a screen door. So when the full trucks come, I can feel the vibration in the house. Now, it's pretty well-known that noise pollution can be harmful to your health, causing things like hypertension, heart disease. And yes, my husband and I are pretty stressed over all this. Just to give you a reference, a jackhammer is 85 decibels. A dump truck is 84. So there's no place in my house I can get away from it. I have to get in my car and get away. This is life for us today. I can say I'm also a business owner. I'm a pet sitter. And people give me keys to their house. They trust me to go in, take care of their animals, take care of their house, fully trust them. I tell them, "Please, put in cameras. See what I do." Let me just go to the chase here. The dump is above us. All the water runoff would come down to my house. And then the dump is the high part of John Joy Road, which is all downhill to Glassblot Turnpike and the Day School. Lastly, property value, tanking. Who's going to buy my house? So, you know, I drive by amounts of debris on Route 212, and I realize this is all coming to my backyard. So I implore the zoning board, please, no special permits or exemptions or variances for rezoning. And please, for the health and safety of all of us, this operation must be stopped. Thank you.
Hi. Can you re spell my name? Thank you for pronouncing it correctly. I too live on John Joy Road, two driveways north of the Felkey or Felkwee, or however it's pronounced, Road. And I'm just speaking as a homeowner. We'll be living up here in that house coming on nine years this summer. And we moved here because we love the area. We've been covering our rural lives. And we live on this beautiful little country road, not even a line in the middle of it. And now it's turned into this horror. And as Lorraine just said, trucks going up and back, up and back, all day long, all day long. And it seems to me today was some sort of new high because, perhaps because of tonight's hearing, I don't know. But as soon as one would go up, another would come back, up and back, up and back. And Sunday, they were working all day on Sunday. The dust is incredible. It's... Yes, the windows are closed now. When the windows open, the dust will be all over. What about the wells? We just had our wells tested. The DEC actually offered to test our wells. We received a letter about a month ago to make an appointment with an independent testing company, Parsons. And they came two weeks ago, and they're testing for PFOAs, for this, for that, for everything horrible you can imagine. How does that make us feel, right? All right, the road itself has a 35-mile speed limit. These trucks are not going 35 miles an hour. You walk to the mailbox and you put your life at risk because they come barreling down, as several people have said. It's so distressing, so distressing. So we're frightened about the water, the dust, the horrible change to the quality of our life. It just sort of feels like a nightmare, or, as someone else said, falling down the rabbit hole. And I just kind of beg the zoning board to hear everybody that's speaking today. And it doesn't even matter about what we're seeing saying. I heard the town lawyer talk about the violations, and various other people talk about how these people are in violation of every single different rule you can think of. And I call upon you to protect our safety and our health and the environment. And also, I add my voice to those who are saying, "And let's get it cleaned up once this thing is shut down." How are we going to get it cleaned up? It has to get cleaned up. Thank you.
Kathy Nolan.
Thank you. We're going to pass out some photographs to the board here. Yes, I'm sorry, Kathy Nolan, N-O-L-A-N. I'm a Nolan. N-O-L-A-N. Kathy with a K. I am senior research director for Catsfield Mountain Keeper. I'm also an Ulster County legislator for District 22, which is the towns west of Woodstock. I'm here tonight only in my role with the Catsfield Mountain Keeper, not as a legislator. From the perspective of looking at a lot of environmental issues in small towns, the zoning and environmental laws that are being broken here are very clear. And the situation, as you can see at the site, is horrible. I'm glad that the town's engineering engineers are going to provide you with specific numbers. But it is true that on casual inspection, you can see that these four-acre parcel thoroughles covered, so well beyond one acre. And the issue here is really enforcement, which the town is doing. And we're so grateful that the town has been taking these actions. The ZDA and the town are central to getting an issue like this resolved. There may be DEC involvement, as there is here. There may be Department of Transportation issues. The zoning board here is essential for you to make findings. It's not true that simply because clean fill is defined to be certain elements, that what they have there are those elements. You can write that on the form and not have that be the reality on the ground. So there are questions about the toxicity of materials, but that's secondary. The laws that are being broken here are about the way you conduct the business and the amounts of fill that are being brought in. A DEC has cited the applicant here, the Corolla family, for not having the type of fill that they said they had. But that really is secondary. What's the key issue is that there were no activities like this happening on this property ever before the Corolla's family bought this property. And so it's a non... Any prior non-conforming use was something else. And the pre-existing business was what the roths were doing. And that appears to have been extinguished as well at the time the property was purchased. been extinguished as well at the time the property was purchased. So the findings that this isn't the activity that they were thought to do, to be allowed to do, is your key element here. And the stop work orders were entirely appropriate, and you should back them up. Thank you.